We welcome, we welcome the public to the meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. Our mission is to prepare all of our students to lead lives of joy and purpose as knowledgeable, creative, and compassionate citizens of a global society. The Board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending. As required under the Open to Public Meetings Act, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk, Princeton Packard, and the Times on January tenth, two thousand nineteen, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board. Board Policy twenty-two thirty, Recording Devices, requires that we inform those attending that this meeting, this meeting, that the proceedings are being recorded on video. This meeting is being recorded and may also be livestreamed. The representative of the sending, of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools, as more specifically designated in New Jersey statute. In the event that the statute is changed, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to central administrative and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered abstentions. Would, would you, Mister, would you like to call the role, please, Secretary?
Beth Baron.
Here.
Greg Stankiewicz.
Here.
Betsy Baglio.
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Daniel Dart.
Here.
Jessica Deutsch.
Here.
Bill Hare.
Here.
Ryan McDonald.
Present.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Present.
Evelyn Spon.
Here.
Sam Harshberger.
Here.
Ally Rounds.
Here.
The first item on tonight's agenda is item D one, Adoption of Minutes for June fourth, two thousand nineteen. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Brian, Dan, second. Any discussion?
Second to that.
Dan. Brian made the motion, Dan second. If there's no discussion, can I have a show of hands for approval? Motion passed unanimous. Second item is Adoption of Minutes for May twentieth, two thousand nineteen meeting. Can I have a motion? Jess, second. Brian? Any discussion? No discussion, can I have a show of hands for approval? Motion passed.
Abstained.
With one abstention. The next. Slow down. It's very thick tonight, so I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Move it along. We have a lot. The next item is item E one, The Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Report, which is a consent item. For the consent items, I will be re-reading the heading and we will move on. We have talked about some of these things and asked questions in advance, so the public knows we're not just rushing through things we have asked questions, but for purposes of expediency, we do lump a number of items into a consent. So we will move on with that. The next item is my report. I am going to keep it very brief tonight. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming to our meeting. We have a very large and packed agenda with lots of interesting speakers and presentations, so I will keep it brief. I am going to give a shout-out. It's the end of the year and our students are doing all sorts of exciting things, but I was made aware of the fact that seven of our students qualified for the, the meet of champions for track, which apparently is the most number of students of any school in the state. And I would like to recognize that Paul Brennan took first in the discus, Jackson McCarthy took sixth in the eight-hundred-meter run, Nils Wildberg was second in the long jump, Simon Schenk was second in pole vault, Jacques Phelan was sixteenth in the triple jump, Sienna Moran was nineteenth in the sixteen-hundred-meter run, Colleen Linco was fifteenth in the four-hundred-meter dash. And the week before, I understand, the boys' track team just missed defending their Group Four state championship by one point. All credit goes not only to the kids, but to their outstanding coaching staff, whose dedication and effort makes these results possible. So thank you, kids. I want to just recognize those students and so many of our other students who are doing all sorts of wonderful year-end activities and having recognition and scholarships. There's way too many to name, but if you would like to have a shout-out at future meetings, just send me an email and let me know, and I'd try to mention you in my comments. So that is all I really wanted to say tonight. I just would pass it on to you, Superintendent Cochran. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh. Oh, I do have one more thing.
One more shout-out.
One more shout-out, and that's a very important one, and that is to our two student board members, Ally Rounds and Sam Harshberger. We want to thank you for the time that you've given to this Board this year and the, the importance to us of having a student presence at the table as we go through a number of issues that are really all about the kids, and it's, it's so important to us having you here. And you have brought to us consistently, week after week, information based on surveys of your fellow students, which has added some real value and real common context to what we're talking about. So, so thank you for the work you've done with your classmates and, and your fellow students, and thank you for your time sitting through these long meetings, when you have lots of other work to do, for sure. And we wish you both the best in your next endeavors, and we're sure you will meet with much success, and we hope you will remember us here at the Board of Education and maybe come back and talk to us or send us feedback from time to time. And I'd like to open it to any other board member that might want to say something. Does anyone else have any comments?
I just wanted to say that one of the first things when I became a board member that I was really struck by was how important it was to have student voice represented at the table, and so thank you to both of you for maintaining and enhancing that tradition for us coming forward, and we're going to miss both of you, so thank you. Thanks for everything you've done.
And perhaps one day you'll run for the Board of Education.
Yeah.
In whatever town you live in, perhaps Princeton or Cranberry, and we wish you all the very best.
We hope you were inspired and energized by your time with us and that you will want to do public service someday, too, when you're, you're older. Okay, now I have to go on to less fun. Thanks. Oh, I have to actually say something. Shall I read this?
Go ahead.
Whereas Sam Harshberger is leaving the Board of Education due to graduation, and whereas Sam Harshberger has fulfilled a year of service, be it therefore resolved that the Board of Education recognize the contributions that Sam Harshberger has made to the district and its students, thank him for his time and effort, and wish him much success in his future endeavors. And Ally Rounds, whereas Ally Rounds is leaving the Board of Education due to graduation, and whereas Ally Rounds has fulfilled a year of service, be it therefore resolved that the Board of Education recognize the contributions that Ally Rounds has made to the district and its students, thank her for her time and effort, and wish her much success in her future endeavors. Thank you both.
Thank you.
I think it's also a tradition that you get to keep your nameplate and take that with you wherever you go. Look, good evening, everyone, and welcome. In, in case you were counting, I'm sure that Sam and Ally are. We have only nine more days until graduation. So this is truly an exciting time in the cycle of our school year as we celebrate the accomplishments and the relationships that have been created over the last ten months. It's a time of art exhibits and author nights and awards assemblies and moving on ceremonies, and it is a time to say thank you for the work of our teachers and staff, a time to say thank you for the support of our parents and community partners, a time to say thank you for, for the inspiration and achievement of every single one of our students. And I look forward to being able to say some of those thank-yous in person at the JW Promotion Ceremony next Tuesday at the Princeton Charter School graduation next Wednesday, and obviously at the graduation of the Princeton High School class of two thousand nineteen next Thursday evening. Everyone, please keep your fingers crossed for clear weather. I often say that the most important role I have as superintendent is to hire and support great people who, in turn, support and inspire our students. And so after a comprehensive selection process that began with over two hundred candidates, I am honored and excited to be recommending that the Board appoint tonight one of those great people to assume the role of our newest assistant principal at Princeton High School. And that great person is Rashawn Johnson. Rashawn is one of our own, a graduate of the College of New Jersey with a master's in education from Rider University. Rashawn has been a teacher and a coach in our district for the past two decades. He's served in the past as an interim assistant principal, and he was named Track Coach of the Year in two thousand eighteen by NewJersey.com. Rashawn has developed positive relationships with literally thousands of students. He is well-respected by his colleagues. He has fostered deep connections within our community, and he is fully supported by Jessica Baxter, who is with him here tonight. Very excited to celebrate her very first hire as our next principal of Princeton High School. Rashawn is equally excited to work with Jessica and the other assistant principals, and he shares their vision of a school that ignites a sense of joy for students and staff. Accomplished, charismatic, and caring, Rashawn brings a sense of mission to his work with students, family, staff, and community members. He also brings a readiness to learn and an eagerness to start a new chapter in his contributions to the Princeton High School community. The Board's vote on Rashawn's appointment will be a little bit further down on our agenda, but I wanted to take the time now to acknowledge and affirm his presence here tonight and to thank both him and Jessica for their commitment to our kids. So thank you both, and you'll have a chance to speak maybe a little bit later, Rashawn. Okay. I want to turn now to our advertised presentation on safety and security in the Princeton Public Schools. As everyone is aware, we have a number of security enhancements as part of our facilities referendum. Those physical enhancements are absolutely important, but they are also part of a much larger approach to safety in our schools. That approach is one that begins at the most foundational level with fostering a climate of care, a climate in which every child is known and every family is welcomed. It is a climate in which our children are taught to honor differences and to resolve their conflicts peacefully. It is a climate in which students know there are people looking out for them, and a climate in which they know to whom they can go if they are experiencing difficulties or stress. The next level of our approach to safety and security is about procedures and protocols. It is about signing in and shutting doors. It is about the training we provide to our staff and students so that they respond appropriately in the event of an emergency. It is about our partnerships with fire, police, and rescue. And the final level of our approach includes all of the physical assets associated with security. It includes doors, cameras, lighting, security vestibules, et cetera. We look forward to proceeding with the projects that will provide us with the greater physical protections. We want to make sure, however, that our projects are always preceded by process. So in this case, we wanted to make sure we consulted with local and state security experts, some of whom are here tonight. Mr. Gale, thank you very much. We wanted to make sure we consulted with our own administrators, teachers, staff, and parents, and we wanted to be open and transparent with our entire community about what we are doing and why, hence the presentation tonight. And I want to thank and introduce Tim Charleston, who is not only our K-28 supervisor of Global Studies, but also serves as the school safety specialist for our district. Tim has been working very closely with our staff, our Board's Facility Committee, our architects, our police, and a variety of security experts to help us understand our security needs and to put together the very best approach possible to address them. So, Tim, I want to thank you for all you have done and all you continue to do on behalf of our students and staff, and take it away.
Thank you, Steve. So, good evening. As Steve mentioned, I am Tim Charleston. For the last five years, I've been the supervisor of Social Studies for our middle and elementary school, and while I'm not here tonight to remind folks that this Friday is Flag Day and that there's a great talent celebration on Friday, I am here to give the Board a comprehensive, the Board, the superintendent, our staff, and the public, a review of what safety and security means for Princeton Public Schools. So why me? As Steve mentioned, for the last twelve months, I've been working as a district school safety specialist. That's a newly mandated position by the state of New Jersey, and what that means is I serve as a bridge between our schools, our law enforcement on all levels, and community organizations. This presentation has a lot of information in it, and it will be posted online for people to view later on, but I want to set the stage for what I'm going to be presenting tonight. And so as a procedural measure, if you have any questions, write them down. We'll take them at the end, and we'll answer them all there. First, I'm going to review what our mission and values are as a public school and set the stage for what modern-day security challenges we face as schools today. And then we'll go through how we reviewed these and what it means for our district, where are areas of strength, and where are our recommendations going. And finally, we'll discuss how the referendum plays a role in all of this and how we can continue that dialogue in the future. So as Beth mentioned at the onset, this mission statement is one that for many people around the state and nation are honestly, truly inspired by. Not many places have joy and purpose front and center, but we do, because we understand the educational value that those two words have on our students, and it goes without saying that to accomplish this mission, we need to keep our kids safe. Our values reaffirm that commitment to joy and purpose. Research and studies continue to show that positive school cultures, climate, spaces, they play a huge impact in achieving that mission. And that's true, really, of any walk of life, true. If you feel happy and safe and secure, your tendency is to feel more attached, caring, attuned to your surroundings and what's going on. Unfortunately, there are challenges to that mission, and to be frank, there have always been challenges to that mission and to the missions of schools, but I want to point out that these challenges that we face today have grown in variety and their impact has deepened. Now, we can debate whether that's been exacerbated by twenty-four-seven media coverage or by social media or by national epidemics, but what we do know is all of these challenges draw us away from our mission and values. So what do we need to do? We need to define what these challenges are. We need to be prepared for them so that when they do occur, we can respond and recover swiftly and thoroughly. We need to address them so that our work continues towards creating those places of joy and purpose and make sure that work is continuous. Some of these challenges are natural and unplanned and devastating. So natural disasters and weather-related events are things that we need to continue to be prepared for. So this was just two weeks ago. Mercer County was on a tornado watch, and how do we respond to unplanned weather events? How do we respond to planned weather events? Snow day is notwithstanding. Some of these challenges can be from nature itself. This is last year in June. We laugh, but schools need to be prepared. What if a bear walks by a school? What do we do? How do we respond? It gets a little bit of a joke, but it's part of some of our plans. We need to prepare for some of these things. We have to. Some are accidental, but the result is still the same. This was just this past year where a teacher and student both died in a senseless accident. So as a district, are we taking the time to ask the right questions? Do we have correct training? Do we have the right people in place? Do we have safeguards and countermeasures? And just to be fair, this isn't just for transportation in our district, but asking those questions for maintenance, technology, or classrooms. Is everyone working in Princeton Public Schools asking that same question? How can I keep the students and staff safe? Some have a national, national reverberation. This is a chart indicating active shooting incidents in K-12 schools from nineteen seventy to two thousand eighteen. Even though the likelihood of this type of event is still low, it still has a visceral reaction on all levels, and it's felt by everybody. Nationally, New Jersey still ranks as one of the safest states for school-based violence, but that doesn't mean we need to rest on our laurels or pat ourselves on the back. As you could see, Pennsylvania, our neighbor, has tied for fifth highest. New York is thirteenth. For perspective, we're thirty-sixth. Our rank notwithstanding, New Jersey has had its fair share of incidents of violence, vandalism, substance abuse, HIB. This is the report from last year from the New Jersey School Safety Data System. It's replaced two prior systems, and as you can see, the numbers in New Jersey are still staggering. Over twenty-five Over 25,287 incidents in public schools. Let's break down that number. If you take that number and take every school in New Jersey that's reported incidents, which there are by that graph, 2,191, and divide that by the total number of incidents, each school would have to respond to 11.5 incidents a year. If you want to take that per district, the 693 districts, and divide that by the total number of incidents, each district is responding to 36.4 incidents a year. The bottom line is this, when an incident occurs, and it does occur, staff, administration, parents, students, we all have to respond, react, and recover from each individual event. And that process doesn't happen in a day. We can't just magically, it can't just magically be over in a day if you want to respond in the right ways. Responding with compassion and care takes time, but it does give us a chance, when we do respond and recover, to put students back on the right path, especially if they're veering down that path of violence, self-inflicted or otherwise. And unfortunately, that is a national epidemic, not just one that New Jersey is dealing with. This is a CDC table that they put out every year about the 10 leading causes of death by age group. The rates of youth and teen suicide is the second-leading cause of death behind unintentional injury, which means accident, a fall, and overdose. The third-highest in teens is homicide. For those of you who can't see the small prints in the back, suicides are in green, homicides are in red, and unintentional injuries are in blue. This table breaks down the numbers down even further and in particular, how children are dying by either their own hand or by the hands of others, specifically by firearm. Again, suicides are in green, homicides are in red. Gun violence is a very real issue. I'm not here to debate the Second Amendment. That's not what I'm here to do. But the issue of pre-teen and teenage suicide and violence is something that we need to contend with, we must grapple with, and we work together as a community.
Could you tell me about some of those drawings that you have? What's that one?
This one?
Yeah, that one. Yeah, what is it? Can you show it to me?
It's a monster. It's a swamp monster.
That's a swamp monster?
A demon bird.
A monster with a lot of spikes. It was all gray with very long fingernails.
A witch with her cape and, and...
And sharks.
Gobbling zombies because they eat people's brains.
A snake sword with a snake head on the top.
Her eyes roll up and then she has fangs.
What do the fangs look like? So, how do you protect them from things like monsters?
Well, we have a couple methods.
Sonia has a little buddy that she sleeps with that helps keep her safe.
Should we just place our foreheads together? I can show you.
Yeah. You go like this and it counts to 10.
And baddies have this power.
It's usually in breeding.
Check under the bed, check in the closet.
He has this little blankie.
But he doesn't want anyone to know and he sleeps with that and it's a comfort.
There's a magic potion in a spray bottle and you spray and he disappears.
We shut the closet door before bed.
No more monsters.
How do you protect them from gun violence?
For good and fine. I mean, I just, it's, I don't even...
That's a really good question.
I don't really think about it as much as maybe I should.
Nobody expects it in their school. Nobody expects it in their town.
I wish I had a magic wand to change everything in the world that's wrong.
Should I not let them go to school and should I keep them home and just teach them at home so we can avoid this? But then my husband's saying, well, you can't let the kids live in a bubble.
You really want to make everything right when they have a kid.
Sandy Hook Promise is an organization founded by the families of the victim of Sandy Hook Elementary. Some of the programs that they actually promote are programs that we are putting in place and you'll see that a little bit later on. Having been a teacher for years, keeping my students safe has always been paramount to me. And as someone who works in administration, keeping buildings safe and secure is, it's a no-brainer. Now, as my wife and I raise a rising second grader, a rising kindergartner, and a seven-week-old infant at home, it really hits home. I can't magically make any of these challenges disappear. These items, as a parent and educator, I need to contend with and be realistic about. So, that's where we talk about resetting our safety mindset. This is where I'm supposed to tell you in this juncture that everything's going to be okay and I honestly, I just can't do that. I don't hold a magic eight ball or know how things may turn out. I don't know how many bears are going to crop up this year and the next month, and I don't know how many severe weather events are going to plague New Jersey. And I certainly don't know about more severe incidents. No one does. And if they do say that they do know, they're lying to you. I'm going to be as realistic about modern safety and security needs as I possibly can as a human being and as a parent. We aren't going to prevent anything from happening and studies have shown that throwing a ton of money at the issue with fancy systems and things like that doesn't get to the root of where some of these problems come from. We need to instill measures that reduce the likelihood of events, reduce the impact of said events, and put in measures that deter and delay those who want to do harm. My job is to help prepare our schools and district to prevent, prepare, respond, and recover. Everybody's job is to do those four things. My job is to deliver this comprehensive report about what we're doing and how we're going to address these challenges head-on. The steps that we've taken to get to this point is not something that we take lightly and it's not something that we've done in isolation. Our evaluation process, just like any other process, curriculum or otherwise, is thorough, comprehensive, is under consistent review from multiple angles with input from individuals and groups along the way. We have security teams or safety teams at each one of our schools at the district level and we meet on a regular basis. Review, we scrutinize, and we ask, are we doing this right? In light of best practices, national framework, relevant data, how can we do it better? Have we talked to other schools, connected with those state, local and state experts and all of our stakeholders in the community? Have we developed that list? Have we talked to the police department, the university, the DOE, the Homeland Securities? These are those questions that we ask ourselves as these groups and I hope everyone asks themselves. This is a mantra that we should focus on, how we can do things together. Again, not one person is going to prevent anything. This needs to be done as a collective community. A wise friend of mine, Jason Burr, principal of John Witherspoon, is always using a quote, "light hands make light lifting," and that's so true. Hopefully, you'll see that throughout the rest of the presentation. So, what are our areas of focus and our recommendations? As Steve mentioned, we evaluated our safety and security measures and we found that they fell into one of three categories. And think of these categories broadly, the bottom being programming, the next one being personnel, and the last one being products or projects. Each one has a valuable place in the Princeton Public Schools. As you can see, as we move up the pyramid, we move from safety to security. Our culture is about safety. We don't have a secure culture. We're not on lockdown or in a police state. We have a secure environment. We have secure procedures. We have secure measures to keep us secure. The research that we have done as a district continues to point at programming, climate, and culture as the best way to focus on school-based issues of threats and violence. One of those challenges. Multiple outlets, white papers, and research from the NEA School Climate Guide to the Framework for Safe Schools, which are co-written by a number of organizations attest to that. When 81% of school-based violence and threats come from students themselves, we know that programming is going to help with that measure. So, what do we do to help students? First off, this one is not an inclusive list. I know I have missed some of the programs in our school district, so don't take this as this is all we're doing. I know we have missed a lot. I can't, I can't put all that we do just on one slide. And I want to thank our school principals, our PTOs, our teachers, our school counselors, Dr. Christina Donovan, for helping with not only this list, but also running these programs. These programs help to get to know every child, they get to know them, who they are, and how to help them. We talked about that research. It also spoke about finding that trusted adult in schools, giving them the tools like social-emotional learning skills to handle the complexities of life. When they do that, they're more in tune with themselves and respond to that culture and climate. This program also extends to our parents and community as well. We're partners in this work. These programs are foundational. We have mentorship programs for all types of staff to get acclimated to coming to Princeton Public Schools. We work with community partners, two of which, I may add, are going to be consent items tonight, High Tops and Corner House, for your approval, that work with our students on a number of programs, substance abuse, peer-to-peer. Again, it all comes back to positive school climate. So, what are some of the recommendations that make sense for Princeton Public Schools? One, continue to create, promote, and instill these programs systemically in our schools. Focus on multiple aspects of security and safety. Again, all of those challenges that I listed before, not one of them was the same. They're all different and we need to be prepared for all of them. And we can't, again, do this alone. We need to tap into our agencies and they need to be tiered. The second point, continue to focus on Maslow's hierarchy of needs. This is something I truly believe in as an educator. And what that means is you need to get to know and understand what the actual needs are and ask the questions for students and even staff. Are you fed? Are you clothed? Have you slept? If we can address those, studies have shown that levels of Bloom's taxonomy and learning outcomes grow by leaps and bounds. We focus on restorative justice. We're going to continue our work in that throughout this past year and in the next year and in the years beyond for positive school-based discipline. Again, we want to help kids stay off that path and be part of the community. And that second area, that personnel. So, this is all about planning, preparing, and prevention. Drilling is a very important aspect in all of this. And you may ask why? The amount of drills that schools have done have expanded in the last 20-some-odd years. This is a statistic that continues to baffle my mind, but every kid in our current educational system is born post-Columbine. We do this so that when we're faced with actual events, such as school swatting, the incident that happened at Panera just a few years ago, we can react with timeliness and with appropriate measures. Drilling is where we can get things wrong and focus on getting it right. So, each school and building, this Valley Road included, has an emergency management plan that's updated yearly. These plans are also sent to our local organizations, OEM, police, fire, for them to review as well. Those drills that I talked about, all of which are mandated by the state. And those drills too are coordinated with those organizations. They can come and actually view our drills in action. Our focus the last calendar year on specific training, in the last 12 months, have had a heavy focus on those last four areas. Reunification. In an event of a crisis, how do we reunify successfully parents with students? Transportation. Jeff Gale is going to come up and speak right after me, was, I was happy to bring him in to hear and give, to give training to all of our transportation drivers this year. And Donna Braden did a great job coordinating that as well. Tabletop exercises on various scenarios. These are those what-if scenarios. So, what if there's a gas leak or a water main break and we have to evacuate first thing in the morning? Could it happen? Yeah, probably could. So, what do we do? So, how do we respond? Are we timely? Are we measured? This happens at each level. The human element is almost as critical. Passing along, communicating information works through the kids' instincts, understanding. So, it comes down to focusing, retaining, and training high-quality staff in all areas. That includes our teachers, assistants, administrators, drivers, custodians, campus monitors, our substitutes, everybody. Making sure that kids have trusted adults to go to and they know where to find information for help, whether that's posted all over school. I put a link to where that's posted on our website. And that our schools have climate and safety teams to respond and react accordingly and to invest in those community partnerships. And I'm thankful for those partnerships and continue to be thankful for them. Just this past year, working with the police department, Chief Sutter, Sergeant Fred Williams, and other officers to coordinate the memorandum of agreement and understanding between the schools and the police department. Or having officers go in and speak to staff members, to hear from them directly. I went to every individual school to do that this year. Or to walk around the eight new officers that the township hired this year to get them acclimated with how our schools are laid out. We did that too. Working with Joe Novak, the fire marshal, who went around with me this year numerous times, looking at security measures for local elections. Working with Bob Gregory, the chair of the OEM department, who you'll hear a little bit later on about what we're doing with the township. And then the university, Kristen Applegate, Don Lo, Paul Madera from the university, who were continuing communication and reviewing our plans for referendum projects. These are just items they did with me. They do countless other projects with school principals and administrative staff and district staff all throughout the year. So, what are our recommendations in this area? They're more nuanced than this simplified version of more training, continue to have great personnel. And here's where we get the nuance. First, our campus monitors. Each building has campus monitors. If you've been into each one of our buildings, you know who they are. They should introduce themselves to you. They're more than just the eyes on the door, as some districts call them. They know kids. They interact with them. They're the trusted adults in buildings for those kids to go to as well. They're also the eyes on the door in the building as well too, and their impact has been immeasurable. We have them in each of our buildings. The recommendation is to continue to have them in each and every one of our buildings. Secondly, continuing to drill with variables. Besides continuing to update our crisis and emergency plans, put those variables as an option-based approach for scenarios. So, when we're working through to make sure that something happens, we need to make sure that we can't always do fire drills at 10 o'clock in the morning where everybody's comfortable doing it. We need to have, rather, we need to be realistic about these drills. We're never going to be able to train for every scenario. We can think through a multitude of those. But if we have a solid base under our feet, as studies have shown, including our own Princeton Police Department, we'll be better off when a scenario does occur. Thirdly, more training, like those listed, on modern needs, reunification, perimeter security, and what to do until help arrives. And finally, as I mentioned before, Bob Gregory is getting together a group of individuals from the township, Princeton Public Schools will be attending that, to discuss district-wide events and how Princeton Public School can play a role in something like this. How do we get our most vulnerable population out of harms way? To me, the November ice storm or snowstorm comes to mind when the town was basically gridlocked. What do we do if something like that occurs again? And so, we're going to be talking through a tabletop exercise and how the public schools play a role. Finally, security, environments, and operation. So, this is the area that many people think of when they think of security. They think of cameras, they think of door control, access control. Yes, we have all of that, but it's, again, it's more layered than that. It's a layered approach. It's a layered approach from the outside in and the inside out, going district-wide and police all the way to our classroom doors. I'm not going to go into great detail about the specificity of how many of these we have in each, but we have all of these. We have physical measures, we have security technology, including panic buttons and cameras and communication equipment, rapid response in each one of our buildings. We have accessibility. We have digital renderings of all of our school ma, on-school maps, so that key emergency responders can know exactly on a grid-based map where something is. We have policies that address these as well too. So where can we improve? So one of the things that we do, and I put this as the last bullet, is that we do annual security audits. Specifically with the Princeton Public Police Department, we could also do them with a number of other organizations as well. And what they do is they come around each one of our buildings, they review the larger security measures that we have, they go door-to-door, they check our security measures, they try to see if they can get into our buildings, and they give us recommendations. We take those pieces of recommendation into the larger context of our schools. So some of their recommendations and our recommendation based off this, some of these are planned for this year, already planned and budgeted for in our operational budget. So, and some are policy changes, other are procedural changes. Some are not listed on here, are habit changes. Those are often the toughest things to break. Some are recommendations that require more capital, which is where the referendum comes into play. But investing in more cost-effective security measures, implementing visitor ID, reviewing communication equipment are all sensible, logical, and attuned to best practices. So the referendum. The referendum is focused on that last part, capital, infrastructure. These projects hit the core of our security needs. The projects here listed balance that need for physical security and psychological safety. That's a really key component to our staff and our students and our, and our people who are visiting. Last December, the voters voted to help the schools install these new vestibules, or main entryways of all our schools. Other projects included new window security film, new classroom door upgrades, and new visitor hardware and a guest management system. I'll speak a little bit about each one of these projects. So when these projects were put up for a vote, they weren't created in a vacuum. Again, one person didn't just say, hey, it would be great to have secure entryways. No. They were backed by research, by task force reports such as the 2015 DOE School Safety Report, and from experts up and down the line. These projects are industry-best standard, industry-best practice and standard across New Jersey schools, including all of Mercer County. So what does a new vestibule do? It enhances the main entrance to create a welcome space for all visitors, including displaying artwork. It allows for more personable interactions with Princeton Public School's staff as visitors enter the school. It creates drop-off locations for materials. As for the windows and doors, new locking mechanisms on the doors, or the doors themselves, will put the doors up to code and also allow them to lock more quickly. And this film that I'm talking about, when applied in the proper fashion, it increases the PSI to about three thousand pounds per square inch or something even higher rated than that. Basically makes them unbreakable for those wishing to do harm. These are going to be some of the designs. They are not final designs that are being created. I just also want to note that the architecture firm and your construction manager firm have been doing this for years and have years of experience designing these sorts of, these sorts of vestibules and entryways. And I was able to see a couple of their schools that they've already have built. Been invited down to Hamilton, and I've been to Robbinsville as well, Robbinsville High So what I saw when I was there, I was quite amazed to go into that secure environment, to go through their procedures and watch as a massive high school dealt with visitors for an hour. What was clear was, yes, they had a new project, but it wasn't just about the project itself. It was about the culture, the environment, and how second nature it was to them. This is community park. And again, for the small print, this will be posted up later, and we can ask more specific questions if we need to. But those guest management pieces, the welcoming, there'll be a window where someone will address people. Yes, you'll still need to buzz in at the outside, but we're creating a second set of doors, or better yet, locking that second set of doors, so we, that interaction can happen in there first. Getting these designs right takes time, and these will not likely be the final iteration of these, but they have been reviewed countless times by our referendum stakeholders groups, which were announced at the last board meeting, and the Princeton Public Police Department. And just recently, the university had a chance to share their expertise on safety and security in terms of the referendum projects. And those community experts agree that these are industry standard, and our schools, teams noted that they do make that balance of safety and security well. On our elementary schools, the, the idea is to create that pass-through window where a visitor can go ahead and give credentials, and they can get a pass to go to where they need to go. My own daughter doesn't go to, attend school in Princeton, but does go to a surrounding school. This is, when I go to visit her school, this is very much like what I have to encounter when I go visit her school. This is Little Brook. Again, very much the same. And Riverside, which for those of you playing at home is almost the exact same layout as Johnson Park. Middle school will act in a bit of a different fashion. Right now, when visitors come into the building, they go to the right, they check in with the campus monitor. They'll still do the same thing. We're just adding a second set of doors so that we can block that traffic and funnel that traffic into the appropriate place. The high school's a bit different, but the tower will function exactly as the same as it is. It has two secure doors as it currently is. And we do have a great set of campus monitors at the high school who man that front day and night. Jessica and Rashawn and the teachers here will attest to that. So the visitor management is the other big project that's part of this. Again, I left a couple of quotes from the task force itself, so you can see what one of their recommendations actually is. Again, this is industry standard, backed by research and task reports, and allowing this, having this in place allows us to know exactly who's in the building at all times of the school day. Visitor management allows us, in emergency situations, to know exactly how many visitors are in our building and if they are accounted for. No longer in an emergency situation would I have to take a paper logbook somewhere with me. I can pull that up on a computer in a, in a different location to see if everybody's accounted for. It allows us to create photo ID badges that have pictures of the person on them. And they're printed on thermal paper. For those of you who don't know what thermal paper is, if you have experienced it, it's a type of paper where if I have an ID, I would get a lanyard like this and I'd put the, the slip with my photo in it. I may go back to my car and let's say I want to go back to the school the next day. I may still have the pass. I may think, I can just walk in, I just have the pass already. On thermal paper, that pass would be voided out and would say whatever we wanted to say. Do not, you know, come back, get another pass, void, you know, something to that, to that degree. It allows, again, for redundancy, and this isn't just for visitors, it could be for contractors. It could be for anybody who's coming in. It also allow, again, was recommended by the task force, to scan state-issued IDs against sex offender databases. Now, we do have a large contingent in our community who do not have state-issued IDs. And that's something that we thought carefully about as well too. So for those without IDs, we wanted to choose a solution that would allow us to take another form of identification. And in working with LALDEF and some of our parent liaisons, we found a system that would take our Mercer County IDs and with a barcode that we provide, they'd be able to scan in as well too, so that everybody would be able to scan into our systems. Now, something like that, once you're in the system, you only need to scan your ID once. They love this idea of that product. And again, it allows for that interaction for, for parent, I mean, for our staff to, to ask questions. What are you here for, things of that nature. So back to this image, and I promise I'm wrapping up. These projects are focused on the security environment and operations. That is true. But they have, what they will do for us is allow for better training, better procedures, better protocols that focus on safety, climate. They're encompassing the larger vision of understanding our safety culture. Before I turn it over to Jeff Gale, who is the Director of the Office of School Preparedness and Emergency Planning for the DOE, I want to share this last thought. So again, as a parent, as a human being, as an educator, as an administrator, I want nothing for the, but the best and the safest schools for our kids, for my own personal kids. We can't do this alone. This includes everybody in this room, community members, parents, board members, students. Only as a community, as a family, can we work together on this, to make this and continue to make this a reality. So with that, I'm going to take it and turn it over to Jeff. Thank you.
Okay, so thanks for having me out, and thanks, Tim. I'll warn everybody now, I have my wife and a twenty-one and twenty-three-year-old daughter at home, and they pay no attention to anything I say, so I'm going to take advantage of everybody like looking at me and listening and, and if I, if I go like an hour, just, you know, drag me out. So a couple of things, just to, just to let you know where you stand. It's all well and good to hear somebody from your district stand up and, and say all the great things that you just heard, but I, I would like to give you a little context. I've been, I'm retired from the New Jersey State Police. I did six, twenty-six years with the State Police, and I've been with the Department of Ed for, I guess it's almost eight years now I've been retired. So I have a side business and I do this all day long, and my retirement's busier than my workday. But with all that said, for the last five years, all I've done is school security. I've trained almost twenty thousand people in the state of New Jersey in the last four years. I've traveled all over the country. I've been asked to speak all the way on the West Coast. I've been trained in New Mexico, Indiana. There's no end to my thirst for making sure that we get this right, okay? And so what I can tell you with my experience is that New Jersey, I, I participate in the, the U.S. Department of Education Security Leadership Group, I'm on any number of mass gatherings working group. My office is actually in Homeland Security here in Hamilton. I, I talk to states all over the country. The academy that Tim referred to, we have a four-day School Safety Specialist Academy that, that Tim attended, I guess it was last year, right? You were, you were through the first round. So he's been at this for a year. We developed that academy almost overnight. I built probably half the courses for that academy. I just participated in the first academy ever in the country. We're in one of only four states that has such an academy. Indiana was the first. When I left Indiana last month, they've been at it for twenty years, and they're asking us to, to give more of what we're doing. We have caught up to them in, in five years. They've got a phenomenal product, and ours is every bit as good, and they're asking us for our help. The reason I'm giving you this information is not to tell you how great I am, because anybody that, that applies themselves over this course of time can come up with what we've come up with. But our office is a very small, there's only six of us. We operate basically out of a closet in the dark, holding candles. We have no support whatsoever, and we're at the front of this country. New Jersey is at the front of school security in this country. I want you to all understand that. I want everybody here also to understand that the schools in this country are still the safest places for our kids. So this is not something that we run around in fear constantly of, you know, how do we stay safe? You know, tomorrow's our next, our next issue. But I will also say that to our new future school board members, and maybe you've already had enough, I'm not sure, we'll see how that goes, this does not end here, right? We go on to higher education, we go on to jobs. This concept of keeping safe is with us forever. The, Tim gave you active shooter numbers and statistics, I can't follow that. My high school algebra teacher once told me that math and English were my three best subjects, and I'm not sure if that was a negative reflection on me or him, because I believed it for a while. But the reality is that safety and security is not anyone's job. It's our job first for ourselves. When my two girls were young and they'd get upset, they'd be unhappy, I would constantly remind them, there's one person who's ultimately responsible for making you happy, and that person is not me. It's you. The same goes for your safety. Wherever you go, you do not take it for granted that somebody else has all the bases covered. Every single one of us is a part of this process. And so when, when Tim talks to you about culture and climate, and when Tim talks to you about the security culture and climate, this is where we all have a, a responsibility to participate. So sitting, looking at the school, saying you need to do more, what are you doing, or you're doing too much, that's really not how this works. We, we don't live in a society like that anymore. So what I can tell you is that your district may not be able to tell you everything that they're doing to keep your kids safe. When the CIA starts telling me how they protect me from Russia, then we've got a problem, because that means Russia's probably already figured it out too, and they adjust. So there are some things that we don't even train school boards on. I, I speak at the school boards, in fact, I just was at Mercer County Community College for the, the Mercer County version about, I don't know, maybe three months ago, I was in Atlantic City for their conference. There are some things that we don't even talk to school boards about, because it's a transient group that leaves and, and, you know, you, you never know who takes that information with you. What I can promise you is I was part of the Governor's School Security Task Force, I was a liaison to that, to that group. These recommendations, the things that your school district is doing for you are definitely based on best practices. They are coming from a, a ton of training and experience. Know how engaged Tim is, know how engaged your district is, and know that the things that I just saw up on that board are in concert with all of the best practices that we preach on a continuous basis. I can tell you that if anyone has read the Parkland Report, the upshot of what, what they sat down and they put a whole commission together and they worked at, what, what are we doing that we needed to be doing differently? What are we missing? Almost every single thing in that report, my office has been preaching for the last five years. We're already there on all this stuff. They're playing catch-up with us. So if anybody's got any questions, I'd be more than happy to, to talk to you about them, but I will tell you that as community members, as parents, again, to, to Tim's point, I'm, you know, the, the gun control debate is not something I'm here to talk about. However, I will tell you that when you start doing your research, you will find that about sixty-eight percent of the guns used in school shootings come out of the home. So if I own a gun, am I a responsible gun owner? Do I own that gun? Do I keep that safe and secure? The things that we've learned, you know, I can go down the, a long, long list. Red Lake, Minnesota, student took his grandfather's rifle, shot and killed him in his bed, and moved on to the school and started shooting. Townville, South Carolina, took his father's forty-five caliber handgun, shot him in the back of the head, went to the school and started killing. Sandy Hook Elementary School, same scenario with the mother. I could go on and on and on and on. This is where these things come from. They come from climates that are not inclusive, they come from client, climates that are not accepting. When you, I could talk all day long on, on behaviors, survival behavior, I could talk to you about threat assessment. This stuff is, is, is what I live every single day. That's really more of a long presentation. I, I presented to three hundred and fifty-seven parents in Hasla Township last year, right after Parkland. I spent four hours answering questions after I gave an hour and a half presentation. Your parent nights are probably, what, about thirty people that show up, and they're the ones that already get it typically, right? So those things are all available to your district. I came out and trained your bus drivers. When I talk to your bus drivers, I talk to them about threat assessment. I talk to them about crash dynamics. I talk to them about physical safety and security. It wasn't just how to keep a bus, you know, from running off the road. There are components to all of this that are important for us to understand. But start to learn the warning signs, start to understand that it's our responsibility to pay attention to what's going on around us and to report. It's our responsibility to adhere to the safety principles, the security practices, the physical security measures that are put in place on this campus. They're not put in place to protect anybody, because we're scared of anybody in this room. We need to delay and deter the person who's bent on attacking or harming someone in our school. And if we don't adhere, if we don't follow those policies and procedures as parents, as community members, as students, that threat does not stand out. Propping doors open, refusing to give our ID, holding the door for the next visitor, all these things are part of the culture that they're trying to foster here. It does not mean that it's not an inviting environment, because that's not, I don't, unless I missed it, Tim didn't talk about how to construct your drawbridge or where to buy the fiercest alligators for your moats or anything like that, right? So know that your, your district is very engaged in this. I see Tim at everything we're doing, the Sandy Hook Promise Training that we're putting out. We're rolling out Stop the Bleed. He's, he's been engaged, I see him constantly. And I'm, I'm not going to mention the name, I'll end it with this. My, my cousin teaches in this school district. I'm not going to give you his name, because if you're going to throw stuff at me, I'd rather be because of something I said, not because of something he did. But I have a vested interest in this district, not just in the state of New Jersey. So if the board wants to meet in private later and ask about how much you should be paying my cousin, I'd be more than happy to have that discussion offline, but outside of that, you know, I'm going to, I'm just going to walk away unless anybody has any questions for me. But I, I just felt it was important for you to understand that this But I just felt it was important for you to understand that this stuff that's being proposed, this is where we preach, that these physical security measures need to be put in place, and it's our job as a community to do what we can to support. It's not a matter of locking people out of our buildings and not wanting parents around, it's more a matter of making sure that we do that in the safest way we can, so that our kids don't have that fear that they're not working in a safe environment when they come to school. All right? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gale, thank you, Mr. Charleston. Are there any questions from the board?
Thank you, first of all.
Oh, you're welcome.
For your presentation, and thank you very much. I heard you at the school boards.
Okay, I'm sorry, you had to listen to me twice.
I had to listen to you again, right. But one of the things that stuck with me about your presentation was you talked about, no matter what we build, it's all about the people, and ensuring that everybody's on the same page in terms of what the procedures are and so on and so forth. And that's kind of, I just want to touch on that, because I chair the Equity Committee for this board, for the school district, and one of the things, we had a group of teachers come in last night, and one of their concerns was about inconsistent application of security policies to students attempting to access buildings without identification. And so, I'm wondering, how do we ensure that we have the people who are at the door, and who are allowing people access or not allowing people access, are A, treating people equally? Because when kids are not allowed to enter into the building because they don't have ID, or they're subjected to microaggressions, then that impacts their ability to learn. And what we're about here is first and foremost, making sure that kids get into school and to learn. It also impacts attendance, and whether or not kids are held up or prevented from coming into school, then they can't go to class. So how are we making sure that that positive school climate is equally applied to everyone who approaches our doors?
Well, they're your employees, number one, so they should not lose sight of the fact that that's the case. Or do you have student IDs, every student has an ID that they have to show to access a building in your district? I'm unfamiliar with your access control within the district.
No.
Well, it's, so, well, you know, that's a debate, that's a hot potato that flies around the state on a rather continual basis, but there is a lot of value to having an ID system, and you have it or you don't. And you're going to be subjected to, you know, just like at the airport, you show up, you don't have your ID, we've got to have a whole different conversation than somebody that shows up and has their identification. So, you know, how you vet people is going to be dependent on what they bring to your door. You know, so there shouldn't be any difference in how we treat somebody that we can positively identify, as opposed to somebody that we aren't sure has legitimate access to our building. But that should always be done in the context of a professional conversation. It shouldn't, people shouldn't be treated any differently. So making sure that your people at the door, your gatekeepers, so to speak, are trained in making sure that they're positive and professional, and equal with everybody that they respond to is part of the equation, but the other half has to be the burden of the student that wants to come through that building, and being prepared to go through that smoothly, just like you show up at the airport and you leave your switchblade at home, I hope, right? You know, cheapen in your bag and then argue about it. We have to figure out what our process is and how we facilitate our own smooth movement. So it's kind of an education thing on both sides, and then following the policy. And IDs go a long way to speeding that up. If I don't know what Tim looks like, but he can show me his ID, that's going to make me feel a lot more comfortable about facilitating letting him into that building.
And maybe that should be part of our conversation, that the whole ID piece, because if we say, "Every child known," if they don't know the child, then there's got to be a Plan B that allows the student access to the building.
Right. And, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of trainings on, one of the most dangerous things that we can do, and not so much with students, but in the general conversation, the person that's going to attack you, in any situation, whether it be a child predator, whether it be a physical attack, a domestic violence incident, an attack on a school by an active shooter, 90% of the time, you know the person that's making that attack, and they know you. There's a reason for that attack, it's not just some random thing, okay? So because I recognize you doesn't mean I should just, as a community member, permit you into my building. I should have an assurance that you're there for a reason. A student should be able to show that they're coming to school for a reason, but so too should, and I don't mean to turn my back on the crowd when I'm answering your question, so too should a parent that shows up at that building. I'm very big on a procedure where you do not visit my school without an appointment, because I need something to vet you against. I need to know that somebody has already approved your appearance at my building, so that I have an understanding that you're there for a legitimate purpose to begin with, before I even start worrying about your identification. Just letting somebody come into that building on a regular basis, it doesn't tell me why you're here that particular day, and what you're bringing to my door on that day. There's a great video out there, the San Bernardino School Shooting, an estranged husband came to the school, came in to see his estranged wife, they recognized him, they let him in, he walked up in a jacket and tie, he signed the log, just like he would any other day, and he walked into the building, and he killed her and a student by accident, and wounded another. They let him in because they knew him. So that is a critical, a critical thing to work out, you know, what is our policy for letting people into our building, making sure that we escort them. But, you know, everybody should have training that we don't treat anybody differently just because of how they look. But at the same time, you have to allow a little bit of latitude to a guard that says, "Well, I do know that at least this person's a student in the building." So, you know, if I don't have, if I'm not doing pat downs, if I'm not doing screenings, if I'm not doing bag checks, then that student's going to be facilitated right through, because I know they belong, whereas that next person that I don't recognize, I have to at least ask the question, I have to start figuring out, are you a legitimate student? Am I making sense? So, you know, that's something that you could facilitate by making sure that those students had a quick way to verify that, yeah, I belong here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to clarify, is there then an emerging best practice in terms of IDs in middle school, elementary school, high school?
Not really. You know, anybody in the security world will always tell you that identification is key to making sure that somebody belongs in that environment, but it's a very difficult thing to achieve, because you can hand every kid in your school an ID, and, you know, a third of them are going to show up the next day, and they're going to leave at home by mistake, you know? And maybe a little portion of that third did it by mistake on purpose. So, you know, you've, there are challenges that come with identifications. I've seen schools that have rolled the identification into other privileges that you get while you're in the building, you need it to be able to get into the cafeteria to eat, you need it for other purposes, so that there's an encouragement to bring that identification to school. But they do get lost, they do get forgotten, and then you're back to the same scenario, I forgot my ID today, and now somebody has to figure out, you know, who I am and whether I belong there. But they can go a long way, if you start getting to, I mean, there are IDs out there now that actually have a chip, that you can track that student while they're in that building. So if I'm in lockdown and I'm missing Tim Charleston, well, I can go right on the screen and say, "Well, he's in the boardroom." You know, those things become an issue that parents want that assurance that that's not being, you know, I'm not tracking the kid around town, or whatever the case might be, but there's all levels to those types of identifications. Swiping them in and out of the building for attendance purposes, making sure I know that they're in the building, you have a partial collapse of your building and you're trying to locate everybody, I can tell by that card whether they're in, whether they're out. There are lots of other advantages to a card system like that, but it comes with some challenges, and then you have to weigh those things for yourself.
Just have another question. Have you ever observed a school district where they assist families in uploading photographs? So, or even in lieu of IDs, a student photograph might come up, if a student gives a name, whoever's sitting at the desk might see on the screen in front of them that it matches.
You're talking about for coming into the building, for checking in?
Yes, so...
There are school, there are databases where there are student photographs, and, I mean, you can take that again to other levels, that you have the screening system that you're proposing, where you're checking against an offender database. You know, you can also load in things like restraining orders, non-custodial parent that's not permitted to take that child out of the school. There are lots of other things that you can facilitate to make sure that, to do your best to vet that person. You know, you're going to put in vestibules, those vestibules come with training, they come with a procedure. I joke all the time, when I give these trainings to schools, I have a slide, that's a picture of the buzzer at the front door, and I ask everybody what it is, and it's like, "Well, that's a buzzer." I say, "No, it's an automatic door opener, because I push that button, and that door's going to click nine times out of 10." So why do we put the vestibule in if all I do is hit the buzzer? Who is screening me before they, you know, there should be a conversation, there should be a visual, there should be something to make sure that we're vetting that individual before we even let them in the vestibule, let alone into the building. So, you know, that can be helpful, and schools, I have seen schools that will have photo IDs, and they can identify the student, it would be helpful. You know, whether it's something you can feasibly do with the system you're contemplating, or whether it's cost-effective, that's another story.
Well, I'm just wondering if a student is forgetting an ID, and that becomes a gating item, for lack of a better term, if the student gives a name, that same ID picture would come up, and I'm wondering the same thing for parents as well.
It's one of the reasons that it's so critical, that your security staff, your monitors, whoever's doing your security for your building, they should know everybody. They should be moving around, they should be developing relationships. When you start looking at threat assessments, and you start figuring out who it is that's going to be a threat, who it is that's going to be a problem, the first thing that you're measuring is what their baseline is, and how they might be deviating from their baseline behaviors. Not just that somebody is a loner, that does not make them a shooter, but somebody that withdraws and retracts and disengages, that's a sign that something's changed in that person's life that we need to investigate. If you don't know people in your building, then you don't know who belongs, and you don't know what changes are going on in their life. So those are a challenge for a school community, but it's something that those monitors should be engaged in. They should be afforded every opportunity to mingle with the school population, to develop relationships, understand people's baselines, and know who is in that building, who belongs there and who doesn't in the first place. You know, I'm not sure what your population number is in any one of these buildings, but somebody that's good at that job is going to know everybody. They should, I would.
Thank you. Debbie?
Yeah, I was wondering if there's been any more discussion on moving the elections out of our schools, based on this comprehensive review on security, because next school year, for our town, we have November and June as closed days, so which means we move out further into June.
Right. So it's a huge challenge, it was something that was addressed by the Governor's School Security Task Force.
This year, recently?
It was addressed, they didn't come up with a solution, but they did encourage, and there was a huge contingent that followed us around the state when we gave the briefings on the, that were just about the election. They went from North Jersey all the way to Cape May County, following the group, throwing in their two cents at every meeting about the elections. The issue with elections, to understand the reason that this was, that schools were first encouraged to use their buildings for elections, typically it's your community center, typically it's ADA accessible, and it may be one of the few and only places that's ADA accessible in your, in a given town, okay? And then the other caveat that they put in there was that it, the voting process is something that the students will now be a part of, they'll be able to witness, they'll be able to see how important it is to vote, because the community's coming in, and now they're exposed to this process of voting from an early age, and it's more likely to engage them. Fast forward to now, you know, nobody in this room would be permitted to work in this building without being checked against the registry, and having a criminal history check. But now we're letting the community into the building, we don't know who these people are, they have the ability, in many cases, to co-mingle with the students, and so the schools' response in many cases is to what you've done, which is close school. Well, we're no longer exposed to that democratic process if the school is closed, right? Now it's just a day off, and we don't do anything. So, you know, I think that what the mindset is, is if we go that route, then we've reversed the whole likelihood that people want to vote anymore, right? So what's being proposed, there is legislation proposed, using portions of your building, what you should be doing now is using a portion of your building that's not accessible to anyone but the voters, number one. So controlling those individuals on and off your campus, in and out of a portion of your building where they do not co-mingle, and they're not exposed to the students, is the first step, if you're going to do this during a school day. You should also be doing that if it's not during a school day, because I should not come in to vote and end up, you know, putting an incendiary device in the third hall locker on the second floor while I'm here. So it's still part of that process. There was a proposal, and I'm not sure where it stands right now, because we've got lots of legislation out there now pending and recently passed, that if you are using your school as a polling place, that there might be some funding to be able to accomplish what I just explained, that we can use some of that funding to segregate portions of our building, to make them viable for voting during a school day, if that makes sense. So I would look at that and think about, you know, how we're spending our money, and do those things dovetail with some of what you're proposing to do now, so that maybe we can kill two birds with one stone. Maybe there's some money available to, you know, accommodate the voting scenario that also gives you a security feature that you're looking for elsewhere. That's something that you should probably explore. The problem with all the laws right now is I can't even keep up. We had about 10 good laws that came out of the Governor's School Security Task Force, and then we've got a whole line of legislators that have stepped up, because they have to pass something too, because everybody else did, so now we're left with a lot of dregs and bad ideas that nobody wants to say no to, because it's all for the kids. Well, some of it is really contrary to best practice, so I'm not sure whether that one got passed yet or not. Well, I can do a little research and get back to Tim on that, if he would help you.
That would be great, that would be really great. I hate that we close our schools now, because now we get out later in June.
Right.
And, you know, I worked the polls at one of the schools, and, you know, so few people come in, it's just sad that we, and then the kids can't go in the gym, you know, if it's a rainy day, they have no gym, so...
Well, we can just go on Twitter now and call everybody names.
Okay, okay.
You don't have to worry about voting anymore.
Thank you.
Another question, go ahead.
Another question, just a comment. Tim, that was a great presentation, really incredibly comprehensive impact with information. A lot of information I think a lot of people didn't have, especially in the context of everything from the safety to security, and time permitting in the fall, I think it would be great if you could find the time to talk to the PTOs, since I know this is something that the parents would be, I'm really interested to learn, to learn more about.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you both.
No, my pleasure, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Any questions from the public?
Yes, I think so, yes, I think we are, yes.
I have a question. Felicia Spitz, I'm with Pints and Children's Fund, I'm also a parent in the community. So when we get the parent who is a registered sex offender who wants to come to school to visit their kid, how are they going to be accommodated? Because you know that's going to happen.
Well, that's the discussion about policy that also follows that up as well, and a comprehensive policy, and then procedures and measures need to occur. And I can't give you an answer of what that policy's going to look like at that very time, but I know that that has to follow, and anything.
And the most important thing is they can't be exposed to any other students, and so you have to figure out how that's going to work.
Great. Any other questions? Yes, Mary?
Yeah, I was a poll worker also, this time, and part of the training is that you're not allowed to admit anybody to the, at the public, to the restaurants, but if there were an emergency and some older person who was having a problem with, you know, diarrhea or something, asked, said, "I have to go," I mean, you can't say no, and they say you have the discretion, but then the question was, should you accompany this person, and it's so then what, kind of thing. The other thing is, I think that they, it would be helpful to the board, if you could help them get information on the cost of screening devices for backpacks, and for also for, I don't know about facial recognition and that, but I did some research on some of the voice recognition, I think, and maybe finger ID, I don't know. And it didn't, apparently there are a lot of different systems available, and they're not all expensive, and I just think it'd be helpful to know what the cost is.
There are biometric systems that are available, there's a wide range of them, and there are, if you go to any high school in Newark, you're going to find that there's bag checks, it's like going through the airport. The thing about the, the thing about the screening devices is that they really aren't as effective as you would like to believe that they are, they in many cases give you a false sense of security. But more importantly, you know, what happens at the airport when you show up, when everybody else is showing up, and everybody has to get through that screening process? You create a queue of people. So if I'm looking to do harm, I don't need to get in your building anymore, I just have to wait for that queue to develop, and then before we ever get to that screening point, you know, that would be the time that you would be most vulnerable, and now you've got a large group of people. So, you know, there's a, there's a lot of cons that go with the concept of putting a screening device in. I've seen schools go to clear bags, I've seen schools eliminate bags, you can't have a bag, that, you know, they all come with challenges, and you have to figure out for out for your own school district, your own particular building, what you're willing to accept and what the trade-off is, and how you, how you vet those things. And all of it, all of it, all of it, all of it comes down to what our culture and climate is, how well we know the people in our building, that human element, and that's, that's, that's the biggest variable in the equation. But that's really where it starts, and that's why this is all so dependent on this, on this group-wide approach.
I want to thank Jeff for, for really taking the time to, to be with us tonight.
Thank you.
He has an extremely packed schedule.
Right.
And thank you for being here. Thank you very much.
We're grateful to both of you. Thank you.
If there's any other further questions in the presentation, my email and phone number, God willing, if you need to call me, it's on there. So thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, that brings us to item H, Board Committee Reports, and we start with the Student Board Members' Report.
Good evening. For our 10th and final report, Sam and I surveyed students on their perceptions of the experimental schedule tested the week of May 28 at Princeton High School. We asked students how they felt about the schedule change broadly, as well as its two major components, the placement of the lunch break between fourth and fifth periods on non-block days, and the combination of morning break and lunch break into an extended lunch break period. A total of 145 students were surveyed. They responded through a voluntary online Google survey posted in great specific Facebook groups. Overall, the experimental schedule was not preferred by PHS students to the current schedule. Among the respondents, less than a quarter supported supplanting our current high school schedule with the experimental model. Approximately 78% of respondents indicated they preferred the current schedule.
However, when presented with the two substantive elements of the experimental schedule, students expressed a more nuanced view. Around 90% of respondents opposed shifting lunch break to between fourth and fifth periods. 74% of students supported the consolidation of morning and lunch break into a longer lunch period. While no changes to the start time were included in the experimental schedule, we asked students their preference for a start time next year. A majority, 62.4% of respondents, supported maintaining the current 8:20 a.m. school, school start time. Approximately 22% favored a return to an earlier start time, and 15.6% voiced support for an even later start time. Based on these findings, we hope that next year's schedule will consider students' expressed preferences for maintaining the current placement of lunch during non-block days and adding the morning break time to the lunch period. Ally and I have been grateful to serve the board in our capacity as student liaisons. We were thankful to have had the opportunity to learn from board members and community residents broadly, and to have been able to represent and advocate for our fellow PHS students. We look forward, we look forward to meeting with next year's student liaisons following the election this coming Thursday. Thank you so much for everything this year.
Thank you, Sam and Ally. Thank you very much. That takes us to Equity. Michelle?
Our most recent Equity meeting was last evening here in the Valley Road Building, and we had a great turnout. We had about 25 people come to our meeting. We had a presentation from Stacy Sinclair, who is a social psychologist, a professor at Princeton University, and a parent of a Riverside student. And she gave us, made a, presented a really interesting presentation on disparities in school discipline based on community mores, so to speak. So, basically what she talked about was explicit bias and implicit bias, and how the, the measures of those in a community, how they were reflected in discipline in the public schools. And so while she was reluctant to draw any conclusions, like most academics, she, what she did was she had the crowd or the, the group engage in some tests around explicit bias and implicit bias, and also just talked about her research. So, so it was really interesting. She, her next research is going to be on gifted and talented placement, which is also something that we're interested in here in this district. So that was, that was great. And we also had a presentation from a group called Beacon, which is a African-American, I'm going to call it a black affinity group, but that's a title that, or a description that they're not necessarily in favor of. But they talked about what they're, how they got together and how they were created. And one of the first times they ever got together, actually, as a group of black educators, was with Steve. I guess it was in 2016, 20...
Three years ago.
Like, three years ago. And since then, they have decided to focus their efforts on recruitment and retention of people of color at, in our teaching ranks. And so that's what they're, that's what they're focusing on. They also came in with the list of what they characterized as threats. And that was one of the things I just referred to in terms of what they characterize as inconsistent application of security policies. And in addition, they talked about over-referral to special education and income-based programs for African-American students, inappropriate simulations in languages, language in class productions, and differential investigations of professionalism, disrespectful treatment of paraprofessional staff by students and adults, inappropriate misrepresentative demands on expertise, in other words, treating them as token black educators, and racialized tension based on poor communication articulation between schools and departments. Pretty serious stuff. We did a lot of listening last night, and right now, I don't know what our next steps are going to be, but we're kind of on a listening tour in the Equity Committee. And I know I'm learning a lot. I don't know, Steve, do you, Steve's been at every meeting, Debbie, Betsy, Bill, if you have, have wanted to contribute anything, but it's really been eye-opening.
It, it has been, and I've appreciated so much, Michelle, the, the number of people you have brought in and the, the quality of the discussions that we've had. And last night's presentation was, was, was powerful. So listening to some of the concerns, and also they came with some wonderful suggestions, a book study for the entire district and broader. I know we've talked about that. This idea of we're, we're in this as a team, that when we do evaluations, we often will evaluate individual teachers, but it was this idea of the students are moving through our, it's a journey through the grades, and it's a journey during any given day through a variety of different classes. And so our kids are exposed to teams. And how are we evaluating the experience of our students from an equity lens as, as a team of teachers or adults who are supporting our kids? And there were actually some measures that they suggested that we could use. So I, I found it actually a very inspiring and hopeful meeting, even as we face some really serious concerns, as you, as you talked about.
Anybody else?
I thought it was real interesting. She was talking about, the professor was talking about the, the online survey you can take, and I think it's implicit dot Harvard dot edu is what I managed to get off the screen. I wanted to try to take it, but I'm a little nervous.
Oh, you should do it.
White, southern, male, slightly older. So I'm, I'm looking forward to trying to take that, but I don't know how quickly I'll report my results.
And, and I don't want to present this as being anything negative at all, because I don't think they came in a negative spirit, and it wasn't received in a negative spirit at all. It was, it was a spirit of, let's, let's put things on the table and let's talk about solutions. So I, I certainly agree with Steve's characterization.
Yeah, and I, oh, it, it was amazing what they presented, but I want to, I want to do something. You know, I want to just not wait for our next lecture and this and that. I feel like we need to act and work with them. And I was very touched by, you know, some of the things that have happened to the teachers. And I, I want to be part of their solution, and I'm not sure how yet. But that's where I want to head. That's where I'd love to head Equity in.
Michelle, I just want to commend you for the spirit of openness and inclusion and listening that has really characterized the Equity Committee meetings thus far. And I think that the idea of the careful listening, one of the things that came up last night was that as a district, we have this idea of every child known, and I think that the meeting last night really expanded that to every person known. And I think that that's a really important message and takeaway that, that I had from it. So thank you.
And I would just add that as the teachers were speaking, and I really appreciated their focus on retention of, of teachers of color, but they spoke about macro, microaggressions, but then they also spoke about macro and microaffirmations. And that was really powerful for me. Obvious or subtle acts of, blatant acts of social inclusion, and, and how we work as a community to, to support that. So that was really powerful. But thanks very much.
Thanks, Michelle. And, and I'd speak for the rest of us who aren't able to come to the Equity Committees because we would be a quorum. So I hope that you can find ways to share that with the rest of the board so that we can also all benefit from that. And I again remind you of the July 9 workshop that we have for the board, and if you, if we think of some way of bringing some of that into our training or our board retreat, that would be great. So thank you. I think we'll move on to Facilities. Greg?
So just very briefly, the last Facilities Committee meeting was on June 3, right before last week's board meeting. It was really preparation for the board meeting. So just very briefly, I just want to touch on a couple of things. And one of the things was that we summarized briefly at the Facilities Committee, some of the reactions that we heard from our neighbors around the high school, about some of their thoughts and feelings about the proposals for the work on the fields, including the concession stand. So the, the very next day after Facilities Committee, our professionals walked the fields again, identified some possible alternatives that are now being worked on. And so for Facilities Committee, as well as for the full board, and as well as for the public, the, the professionals now are putting together some alternatives. They'll be presented back to the stakeholders, to the, the high school referendum advisory group, to the neighbors themselves, and then to Facilities, and to the board. And that's the, the process that we want to use going forward for, for all aspects of, of the referendum projects. Other than that, I think everything else was, was updated to the board last week. I just wanted to thank Tim and Jeff Gale for their presentation today, and mention that we're going to be talking about some specifics about some of the referendum security measures at next Facilities meeting, which is next, this coming Monday, at a different time than usual, at 11:30 a.m. So, thanks.
Thanks, Greg. That takes us to Finance with Bill.
The Finance Committee met twice recently, a closed session on May 31, and an open session on June 10 in this building. We discussed next steps and progress in, maybe you've heard this before, various cost savings initiatives in a variety of areas, including transportation, substitutes, energy savings, supervisors, teaching, philanthropy, health insurance, and benefits. And I, personally, I feel like we're starting to see progress, which is exciting. We also received an update on numbers of employees switching to the high deductible insurance plans with health savings accounts. For the vast majority of the district's employees, this provides a cost savings in their health insurance costs. It also provides a significant savings to the district, which ultimately helps save jobs. For the vast majority of the district's employees, this provides a cost savings in their health insurance costs, which ultimately helps save jobs. So I said it again and again. I said it last time. I'll probably, under the belief that it will make a difference, I'll probably say it next month. There will be an open enrollment period at the end of this year, in which we hope there will be an increased number of employees who switch these plans, save themselves money, save the district money, and hopefully save jobs when we next seek to balance the budget. We also discussed whether the district should purchase a stop-loss insurance policy to protect the district from unexpectedly high pharmaceutical claims. This is where people start to yawn probably. But there's millions of dollars at stake. The district covers prescription drugs rather than relying on insurance, insurance policy for this. And if you think about, there were, in the last few years, there were a couple gene therapy drugs approved. They were a million to $2 million for a prescription. One person with a prescription for one of these would have a devastating impact on the district's finances. So the question was, do we get insurance to cover this or not? And it looked like the math would say no. Our next meeting will be June 17, 2019, at 1:30 p.m., immediately following the Facilities Committee meeting.
So I have another cost savings idea that might be good. Due to our current financial crisis, I was wondering if we could move the teachers from the trailers in the PHS parking lot to the Numina Gallery for a cost savings of $50,000 a year, which is what we pay for the trailers. And this cost savings, we could be, could use to hire a full-time JW liaison.
Thank you, Debbie. We're still on Committee Reports.
Oh, I thought...
Well, are we allowed to?
I think we give Committee Reports. If we have a new item like that, it comes at the end. Sorry, that's a new, that's a new business. It's a suggestion.
Okay. I guess it was, I was just thinking of the discussion we have about...
Yeah, but we're, we're porting now out of the committee. I don't think it's time for us to have a cost savings discussion.
Okay.
But we could at the end, possibly. It was new business. So is, are there questions about Bill's report specifically? And are you finished?
I'm finished.
Thank you, Bill. I think we're next. Debbie, you're up next as Personnel. Thank you.
Great. The Personnel Committee met yesterday. We discussed the funding for a liaison at JW. And for the 2019-2020 school year, this will be funded 60% of the salary by Princeton Public Schools, and 40% of the salary, and 100% of the benefits by the YMCA. Both the Personnel Committee and the Student Achievement Committee are reviewing the current process for field trips, and will be working together on this ongoing process. In the 2018-2019 school year, we had 191 field trips. On the agenda tonight is the opportunity for the board to approve the proposed comprehensive equity plan for 2019-2022, and authorize that it be submitted to the County Superintendent by June 14. The committee discussed setting a standard rate for substitute secretaries and substitute athletic trainers. The District Wide Search Committee for Business Administrator met on May 23, and candidates were forwarded to Steve. Tonight, the board will be approving Rashawn as the Assistant Principal at PHS starting July 1. On June 28, the Search Committee will interview candidates for a new supervisor of mathematics and business education. On the agenda, there are 12 one-year grant-funded stipends. The stipends will be funded by a grant that was discussed over an 18-month period by both Daphne Kendall and Steve Cochran. Our annual retirement event will be held on, I'm sorry, will be held at Valley Road on June 19 at 2 p.m. And we have a lot of retirees this year.
Thank you, Debbie. Any questions for Debbie? Next, we go to Policy. Greg and Jess?
So very briefly, I'll just give a, a very quick introduction, and then Jess will be talking about what our focus will be on to, with discussion with the board for next month. So I sent around sort of a very quick update to, to all board members. So very briefly, before Jess talks about the, the way we'd like to discuss anti-vaping policies with the rest of the board, I just wanted to acknowledge that Jessica Baxter has been working very, very hard with us on this. We'd like to roll it out together and, and talk to you about it together. So we didn't think that, that Ms. Baxter was going to be here, and I really applaud her for being here for the good news. But we, rather than, because we didn't have a chance, we had very little time to prepare with the change in the agenda, we're going to be talking about that on July 16. But what we did want to do is to give the, the public and the board sort of a vision of how we've been approaching it over these last numerous months, because it's such an important issue. So Jess is going to sort of fill us in really quick.
Sure. And again, just consistent with our ethic as a board, which is to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. We, we look forward to having this more complete discussion at our next meeting when Jessica can be here. But what we're doing as a district is really to working, we're working to address vaping in the schools with an approach that's consistent with our mission and strategic priorities on wellness and restorative practice, that's reflective of evidence-based knowledge. NJSBA model policies and public health sources have been our, our source here. We are coordinating with local partners, Corner House and the Department of Health, to develop community education for parents and youth. And that Hidden and Plain Sight program was one example of that, and the resources that we've added to our website are another. And, and also integrating this approach with our school administration's revision of the Student Handbook and Codes of Conduct, which is the work that Jessica will talk more about and that will go on this summer. Vaping is on the rise, for sure, and the need to address it is, it's not unique to Princeton, but we are by no means immune to it. Per the, the Corner House youth and student rep surveys that we've been presented at this board meetings, we know that 28.2%, at 28.2%, the Princeton self-reported usage is below national averages. But NIH has shown a 37.3% of 12th graders vaping in 2018, which is up from 2017's number of 27.8. So this is on the rise nationally. And as we continue to study the problem, what we've learned is that vaping may be related to, first of all, a direct marketing strategy of companies that are using flavors and designs directly to appeal to youth, misinformation about the addictiveness and harmful properties of the, the substances contained in vape juice, and heightened levels of anxiety, depression, disengagement, and peer pressure amongst our kids. So we have heard from key experts around the state that we won't prevent or address vaping effectively by just punishing or suspending students, that we really need to address the addiction, stress, and isolation that underlies this phenomenon. So we are convinced that vaping has to be confronted as a public health issue in our schools, and we're really pleased that our administration is, is taking that approach with us. We are developing with school leadership a comprehensive approach that includes evidence-based prevention education integrated in our curriculum at appropriate grade levels, updates to the NJSBA model policies 3515 and 5131.6. Those are smoking prohibition and substance abuse, consultation with state and national leaders, and this is very much parallel to the discussion that we had this evening on safety and security, on evidence-based responses that incorporate emerging strategies that think carefully about equity... that incorporate emerging strategies that think carefully about equity and wellness. And in-school educational interventions as an alternative to suspension. We're giving careful thought about differentiated strategies for middle school, because we know that this problem is trending younger. We are participating in state and national efforts to build peer education and peer advocacy models that are looking like really promising parts of the approach to confront this problem, and continuing to build the resources that we make available to the community through the website. We are grateful to Jessica Baxter and Michelle Semborsky, our Substance Abuse Counsel from PHS, who will present at our July 16th meeting, so that we can look at the two critical policy revisions that we will do in the context of this holistic approach. We appreciate the Board of Ed and the community's urgency and patience, urgency and patience, as we craft a response that will help us to maintain a safe, healthy environment that supports our children's health and wellness while they're engaged in education in our schools.
Thank you Jess.
Can I just ask a question? Related to student voice about this issue, are there any opportunities, whether at the school or, you know, I'm not sure how students would feel about coming to the Policy Committee, but really hearing from students directly about this?
Yeah, that's a very good question, and we've been talking about various ways of inputting that, because we've already heard from our student liaisons and from others, including some of our students who are involved in PATA and Corner House, and so we'd like to build on that further. So I agree with you, so we'll explore what we can do.
And for anyone who's interested, there is the Corner House Youth Report given by student leaders that we posted on our website through Corner House, so that's another place to look.
Thank you Jess. I think that takes us to Student Achievement with Betsy.
Thank you. The Student Achievement Committee met last Friday, June 7th at 11:30 a.m. The meeting, the minutes of May 10th were approved. The speech and debate trips, team trips were also approved for the school year ahead and are on this evening's agenda for approval. Valerie Ulrich, Grant Writer for the district, attended Student Achievement to share STEM pathways that are made possible by a recent grant. These programs will provide income-eligible students with programs such as STEM competitions, summer sessions, tutoring and support, summer reading support, and more. We're grateful for this donation and appreciate the work of our staff to identify and develop such programs. Some of the items are on the agenda for Board consideration this evening. Our goal is for greater representation in higher-level programs than these students would have otherwise been able to achieve without such supports. The Student Achievement Committee was updated on current kindergarten registration numbers, which will continue to be added to over the summer. The Student Achievement Committee will receive updates related to class size throughout the district over the summer as well. Dr. Joy Barnes-Johnson, incoming Principal Jessica Baxter, and a Princeton High School student, attended to present a proposal for an overnight course for students who have taken or plan to take the next semester, the following semester, the Racial Literacy Course at Princeton High School. Dr. Barnes-Johnson spoke of a three-to-four-day experience to such locations as Philadelphia and Maryland, or New England, as well as a potential week-long family trip to the South over a spring break or a summer break in the future. Interesting and importantly, interestingly and importantly, they're requiring students would have no more than two absences prior to a fall trip in order to be eligible to attend. So we thank them very much for their vision and note that this year's trip that they are planning will be on a future Board agenda. Mickey Chrisifoli attended Student Achievement to give the Committee an update on special education services that are provided by her department. We appreciate Mickey's willingness to attend Student Achievement a few times each year to answer questions and educate the Board. At this meeting, she spoke about topics such as enrollment in programs, transition planning, and staffing. Priscilla Russell, Director of World Languages, attended Student Achievement, and she spoke with the Committee about a grant that the district receives from the Asia Society. I'm going to go into some detail here, so bear with me. This grant is received because the district is part of the Confucius Classroom Network of 100 schools in the United States who have Mandarin programs. This year, the grant is in the amount of $12,531. The program is sponsored through the Asia Society, and the money does originate from Hanban, the Education Outreach Branch of the Chinese Government. Priscilla spoke with the Educational Director of the Asia Society and confirmed for us that these funds are provided with no strings attached pursuant to a general MOU between the Asia Society and Hanban. PPS has complete discretion to spend the funds as needed to support our Mandarin programs. Priscilla uses these funds to buy workbooks published in Taiwan, to pay for an extra teacher to chaperone our exchange to Qingdao, to help send teachers to conferences for Chinese celebrations, and for costs related to hosting Chinese students who come to our district. Princeton is not a part of the Confucius Institutes, which according to Priscilla are political in nature. That is a, that is a decision that she and the district have made. Princeton's affiliation with Confucius Classroom provides the connection with our sister school in Qingdao and does not make in any way Princeton beholden to the Chinese government. Further, it is important to note that our Mandarin teachers are all Taiwanese-American citizens. Priscilla shared she would not be able to continue to provide the programming we currently have without these funds, and importantly, our ties with the sister school would be severed. Princeton students go on an exchange trip to Qingdao every other year, and students from this school come to PHS on alternate years. So for the Student Achievement Committee, the question of whether to accept these funds came down to policy. The Committee considered whether the grant, quote, "conflicts with the established goals, policies, and procedures of the district," that's from Policy 3280. The answer, according to Priscilla, Steve, Annie, and in our view, is no. Therefore, the Student Achievement Committee members who were present unanimously supported the receipt of these funds, and it is on the Board agenda for full Board consideration this evening. The Committee then heard an update on the current state graduation requirements before adjourning into closed session. The next Student Achievement Committee meeting will take place on July 11th at 11:00 here at Valley Road, and the public is encouraged and invited to attend.
My mic's off. Are there any questions on Betsy's report? If none, then that takes us on to the Public Forum on Agenda Items Only. We welcome the public to come forward and make comments. If you choose to come forward, please state your name and address, and we ask that you limit yourself to three minutes. Seeing no comments, we will move on, and we will try to go rather quickly through some of our next items. It will slow me down if I'm going too quickly. We're on Item J, Board Business for the 2019-20 budget year. Number one, Appointment of Other District Officials is a consent item. Are there any questions? Again, I will read through the title of the consent items, and we will continue unless there's discussion. Item two is Appointment of Treasurer of School Monies. Item three is Implementation of the 2019-2020 Budget. That takes us to Item K, Personnel. And this is an action item, and we would say, "Resolve that the Board of Education approve the Personnel actions and any addendum as recommended by the Superintendent, and request that a copy of the same be included in the permanent minutes." Can I have a motion? Jess, second. Dan? I think it's a roll call vote. If there's no discussion.
On all Personnel items?
On all Personnel items. Would you like to say something?
Well, we have some retirements, and we have, we have some appointments.
Yes, okay.
So I'm wondering if maybe, is there a way to do the appointment first and have that vote beyond that?
Well, we are doing a roll call on all of them.
Okay. But it'd be nice to have it separate, I think is what you're saying. Yes. Yeah. I second that. If it's possible.
I won't be able to do that up here. So what are we doing?
I think, I think the request has been for a roll call vote first on the appointment of the Assistant Principal. Which item would you like, Steve?
So yes, that'd be B1? But while we-
You could just do them all together, I mean-
We could. We could just do them all together.
And then speak to it.
Okay.
I would suggest we just do the roll call vote on the Personnel Agenda Items if there's no discussion, which includes this particular appointment, and then you can speak to that. If that's all right? Would you like to call the roll?
Beth Barron?
Yes.
Debbie Braunfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jessica Deutsch?
Yes.
Bill Hare?
Yes, a big yes for Coach Johnson, by the way.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Gregory Stankowitz?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Evelyn Spahn?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay, Rashawn, that makes it official.
So, I already said all my good stuff about you. I probably have more, but if you want to speak, or Ms. Baxter?
I think we both want to speak, I just want to speak briefly. I wasn't supposed to be here tonight, I had a different event, but this is a big deal. It's a big deal for Rashawn, so I wanted to be here to support him, but it's a big deal for me, it's a big deal for PHS. This is my first hire, and I'm so happy it's you, Rashawn, so congratulations. Rashawn is, I'm literally replacing myself, so he's taking over my, my position, my caseload, my students, my families that I've worked with for eight years. And before, during, as soon as I was announced as the next principal, kids kept saying, "Well, who's going to replace you?" Because they want to know who's going to work with them. Over the past week, as kids and families have found out, and faculty, I have to say, everyone's response has been with joy. Everyone's very excited for him. I know my kids and families are going to be well taken care of. So thank you to the Board, thank you to Steve for this appointment, I appreciate it. Rashawn, we know he's great working with kids, we know he's always been an advocate for them, he's a problem solver, but, but that's not it. I'm actually excited for Rashawn to work with me on scheduling this summer, hiring of new staff, lots of items, and I know he's going to make a great addition to our admin team, and we truly are a team at the high school, so that's great. And the last thing is, this is kind of a PHS inside joke, but Mr. Johnson always wears t-shirts to school with action heroes and superheroes, and what he's doing, when he does it, it's purposeful. And he's doing it to show people who he is, to show them a little bit about himself, but it's also a conversation starter, and he gets to know kids that aren't in his class that he doesn't coach. It's, it's the kid that might normally just walk by him in the hall, it's a conversation starter, and, and he just has that much more of a reach to our students, and I think that's what we're looking forward to, and that's what he's going to bring to the table. So he's not going to be wearing t-shirts every day, some days maybe, but we already spoke about this, he's going to get some more superhero ties, so he's been, he's been shopping, so he'll continue that. So Rashawn, I just want to say, congratulations once again, I'm very excited about this. Thank you.
Ah, that's great.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I really am excited, I can't wait to, it's not even getting started, just to continue impacting and being an influence from an even higher position where I can actually have a greater reach on more students, I think, and families too, to be able to make that positive difference and give, you know, pay it forward and try to give everyone the education and positive high school experience that I think, you know, everyone deserves. And thank, thank you again, I really, I really can't wait to get started, and I'm grateful for your vote, I'm grateful for my athletic programs, I couldn't, as a coach, you just stood up there, that was, that was, that was like our track team that you talked about, like, you know, like, like I, I couldn't have written, I couldn't have written a better story or a movie how to last like three years in both the wrestling program and the track program, I mean, I, it's like going to Disney World, like you really couldn't, you really, you really couldn't have done it, you really couldn't have done it any better. So I spoken to both of my, both programs and, you know, bittersweet, but they're, but they're, they're happy, they're happy for me, they know I'm still here, I'm in the same school, I'm still here in another, in another, I guess, position for our program still, I'm still going to be Coach Johnson and just don't end up in my office. But on, on, on a personal note, I really just, I'm excited, and I, and I can't wait, so thank you.
Thank you Rashawn.
Thank you. We're excited to see what's to come, so thank you so much, and thank you both for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Can I say one more thing? Because on the Personnel Agenda as well, we've got the retirement, Kathy Lewis, and this is like the, the loss of a legacy. Who would think that one of the most popular classes of all time at Princeton High School would be Latin? But she makes it that way, and she has been teaching six periods of it for as long as I've been here as Superintendent, and much longer, and she also is one of the mentor coordinators, which means that she really helps all of our, all of our new teachers understand what it means to be a great teacher. And so we're, we're grateful for her service, and we just, we wish her, wish her well in her retirement.
I just have to make this comment about Ms. Lewis, because my daughter took four years of Latin from her, and so when we went to Europe for the first time, my daughter gave us a tour extraordinaire about all the history of Rome and all the historic sites, and we're like, "Where'd you learn that?" And she said, "From Ms. Lewis," and it was really just extraordinary. It was more than learning the language, it was really learning the culture and really embracing it, and it's, and it's been an asset to her throughout all of her studies and everything she's done, so congratulations to Ms. Lewis, and I wish her nothing but the best.
Wonderful. Thank you, thank you.
The only thing I know about this teacher is that she would never deny a child, she would take as many children in her class, any child that wanted to take her class, she would take them, and that always just resonated with me, that she was just so welcoming, and so I just hats off to her 25 years later. Amazing.
Thank you. Okay. So we're still on the Personnel Agenda, and our next item is number two, these are, I'll continue with consent items. This is suspension of a staff member. And then the next item, item three, is submission of a comprehensive equity plan. And item four, I don't see it, I see item five. Oh, item four, creation of new stipend positions, also consent. Then item five is Central Administration Administrator Contracts for 2019-2020. And then we go on.
It's an action item. That's an action item.
Oh, that's an action item. So, can I have a motion for approval of the Central Administrator's contracts for 2019-2020? Brian, second. Dan? Do we need a roll call for that, because it's a contract?
Yeah.
Would you go to a roll call, please?
Beth Barron?
Yes.
Debbie Braunfeld?
Yes.
Daniel Dart?
Yes.
Jessica Deutsch?
Yes.
Bill Hare?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Gregory Stankowitz?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Evelyn Spahn?
Abstain.
So motion carried with one abstention. Next item is summer hiring, consent. Next item is retirement tributes, 2018-2019, consent. Again, those are the retirees, are we making?
Those are, yeah, those are retirees, and they, we will be celebrating them on June 19th, thank you, at 2:00 in this room. We have, I think, 22 people listed here with a total of 418 years of experience.
418 years is quite something. And I do, I have to say, I see Paul Chapin in there, who had all three of my children, and who is like a dear family member to us, we will miss him.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
A process question. Item two, that's a consent item?
Item two under-
It's not an action item?
Are you under L?
Under K.
K2.
K2.
Suspension of a staff member.
No, I have it as consent. Should that be a-
If you want to do, if you want to do a, an action item on it. I respectfully request that that be an action item.
Can I have a motion?
Um, let's see, should I move in the affirmative or move in the negative? Let's see.
Well, you need the motion, you need to, we need a motion to open discussion.
Oh, move, okay, I, I move that Item K2 be moved from the consent agenda.
I don't, as a point of order, I'm not sure that we need a motion to remove something from the consent.
I thought I could just request.
I would just like a motion for us to have discussion and a vote, so I need to bring the item to the floor.
Okay.
Do you move it?
I'll move it.
Do I have a second? Dan?
Yes.
Okay, so is there discussion?
Um, my discussion to the, and I'm trying to be very cautious, because it is a personnel, I, I have due process questions about, about it. Concerns.
All right. So, if there's no further discussion, I think we need to move it to a vote.
I'm sorry, Michelle, could you explain which item that you moved out and you-
K2?
She went back to K2.
So...
We either, it's a personnel item, so we need to be careful about how we discuss it
Yes, absolutely.
in public. So I think we can move it, though, to a vote. But let Tom separate it.
And I'm sorry, I thought it was an action item.
That didn't work. I tried. Oh, well. All right, I'll have to do this the old-fashioned way.
Okay.
But wasn't the reason that it actually made the agenda was timing? And it was not meant to be on the agenda except for the timing? Isn't that what you explained to us, Mike?
When it comes to the suspension of a staff member, the superintendent recommends a suspension. If it happens in between board meetings, it does not have to go on an agenda. By state code, if the suspension goes over a regularly scheduled board meeting, then the board has to decide to continue the superintendent's suspension. So it is, in that sense, a matter of timing.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Are we ready to take a roll call on that?
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Greg Stankowitz.
Yeah, we could take a, can we take a quick break? Can we make a quick...
I'd second that, yeah.
Yeah, let's take a quick adjournment on this item. All right. So we go out or they go out? I forget.
We go out. Oh, wait, don't we have to like adjourn?
Do I have a motion to adjourn to closed session?
So move.
Dan, second?
Second. Evelyn?
Do I need a motion to go back and open?
Yes.
Resume and then. I'm bringing us back into open session. We are considering the item K2, suspension of staff member. Could I have a motion for the vote? We're going to take a roll call vote. Could I have a motion to address the item? Motion, Brian? Second. Jess, thank you. Tom, would you like to call a vote? We're going to vote to affirm, to approve the following resolution to suspend a district employee whose name is on file in the superintendent's office. And we will affirm the administration's action in this case.
Beth Barron?
Yes.
Greg Stankowitz?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Daniel Dart?
Abstain.
Jessica Deutsch?
Yes.
Bill Hare?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
No.
Evelyn Spahn?
Yes.
Motion passed with one abstention and one objection. I believe that brings us back, Tom, to summer hiring. We're still going through consent items? Did we do that one already? I don't think so.
You're on L.
We're on L.
Yeah, we're on L.
Oh.
We have to vote on K? We have to vote on the rest?
We will. We'll catch it. We'll catch it at the end. We are on L. Number one, consent item, grant application acceptance, learning and leadership grant. L2, amend fiscal year 19 ESA application. L3, grant acceptance SEL Innovation Award for teachers. Four, education consulting services, Samara Spielberg. Five, educational consulting services, follow collaborative. Six, Asian Society Confucius Classrooms Network, 2018-19. Seven, adoption of pre-K12 curriculum, 2019-20. Eight, annual memberships, 2019-20. That includes High Tops and Corner House. Item nine, annual field trip approval. Item 10, student overnight trips. Item 11, summer programs, 2019. Again, there's a number of programs there that are listed. I think it's important to acknowledge there's a number of things going on in the schools over the summer to support our students. Item 12, iXL.com for mathematics for John Witherspoon Middle School. Number 13, grant acceptance, Princeton Education Foundation for EduCer Summer Support Program. Item 14, grant acceptance, Princeton Children's Fund for summer and before-school programming. Item 15, educational consulting, Sage Wellness. Item 16, educational consulting, Tara Doty. And that brings us to M. Number one, revised professional educational services, 2018-19. Number two, educational placements of special needs pupils, 2018-19. Number three, educational placement of special needs pupils, summer 2019. Number four, educational placement of special needs pupils, 2019-20. Number five, Frontline Technologies, IEP Direct. Number six, Competitive Contracting Award, 2019-20, Wilson Reading and Language Services. Item N, financial reports, the certification of payroll and the bills list. Item two, transfer of current year 2018-19 surplus to reserve. This is involving the transfer of combined total of up to a million, transferred to capital reserve or maintenance reserves. Item three, authorization to pay bills and award contracts through June, July, and August 2019. Number four, facility use annual term agreement, 2019-20, the Princeton Adult School. Number five, return of capital reserves for pre-refendum services. It's involving a sum of $250,000. Item six, Spiesel Architectural Group, the approval of the continued appointment of Spiesel for architectural projects for the December 18 referendum projects. Item seven, Carousel Industries of North America Telephone Hardware Maintenance Service for the amount of $21,000. Item eight, technology license renewal, CDW Government JMF Pro Management System. It's a migration and cloud hosted service, $47,000. Item nine, shared service agreement, municipality of Princeton and Princeton Public Schools Consulting Service.
Yeah, um, tell me you changed that to action.
Tom, is that a, is that pulled out?
I sent you an email, yeah. I thought it had changed actually when I looked at it.
Yeah, I don't know what happened.
Okay, so.
It changed and it went back.
Yeah.
I don't know why.
Do we want to, that's, so that is going to be an action item?
Is now the time to ask any questions?
Do we have any discussion? Sure.
Of that item?
Yeah.
So, I appreciated, we did receive an email as a board, some information regarding this shared service process between the municipality and the board. I thought perhaps just to have some conversation for the public to understand this a little bit better. I'm wondering, CGR has been chosen, I know two of you sat in this meeting, if you could just share, three of you were there. Oh, I'm sorry about that. Share the experience that CGR has had working in this capacity or with school districts in particular, and do you think, is the idea that the municipality and the schools will save perhaps more than $30,000 in the near future by engaging in this, in this process? Because it will cost $15,000 for each. So, I thought it'd be helpful to have that information.
Greg, you want to speak?
Sure, I'll start and I'd welcome, we actually had a number of people here around the table. We sat as a joint committee with representatives from the municipality as well and heard three finalist recommendations. And we went through, interviewed three firms. The idea is, we hope there's going to be savings, but it's also a good opportunity, I think, for both entities to do an inventory and work together. And so hopefully this will lead to savings. But what impressed me personally with the firm that was unanimously recommended, CGR, was one, their experience and their knowledge of Princeton, because they were involved in two different projects during consolidation. Two, their academic approach. They were much more academic than the other options, and we felt that that was a good fit for our community. Three, the type of level of experience they brought to working with municipalities, working with school districts, and the two together, here in New Jersey, but also elsewhere. And it was a unanimous recommendation from both sides, with the hope being that by working together, they will point to not only possible short-term savings, but also possible other projects in the future that we can work on together that might lead to more efficient services as well as savings.
Great. Can you comment on the timing? What do we expect now? I know this has been something that people have been talking about for quite a while. Just wondering where we're going.
What they said to us is, they think the first initial report would be within six months, so.
Four to six months.
Yeah. So it's very, very, very quick. And what we heard in, from the experiences of the municipality when they were working before was that they are very quick, that they interviewed and went deep down into the different departments.
I'm looking forward to seeing this move ahead. We've been talking for quite a while about it. It'd be nice to have it actually.
And is there any distinction to the municipality being the lead agency? I didn't know if that, I don't know what that meant or why they were chosen to be the lead here.
Somebody had to write the check.
Ah, I see. So it's the person who gets to write the checks.
My understanding is that the contracts that the municipality uses and that we use are slightly different, and the process involved to develop two separate contracts that would work for both was deemed to be costly and cumbersome. And so ones, that they're essentially the contractor, but at the same time, we're, you know, making it clear that we're sharing in that obligation.
Great.
Thank you very much.
So who is the committee head? Because you sent a mail that said that you and Bill were co-chairs. So I was just confused because I thought Michelle was the head of.
No, no, Michelle is.
Michelle was in Kansas City as my day job. So the remainder of the committee stepped up and conducted the interview. I sort of did the original arrangements, helped draft the questions, kind of all that stuff, just the coordination, but I couldn't be there for the interviews.
Okay. I'd have to say the track record for the municipality with consultants hasn't been so great lately, so I'm a little hesitant about this. And have, when you guys have met, have you come up with anything? Have you picked like five items that'd be really great to work at? I do feel there hasn't been a lot of communication on what's been happening. And I don't know if the meetings have just been discussing consultants. But I'm just curious, is there any meet that you guys have even talked about on areas to look at?
So this was an interview process for three different consulting firms.
No, I understand that, yeah.
And the other two consulting firms actually asked for some sort of rank prioritization from the two different entities. This firm didn't ask for that. They said that they'd take a look at all the different areas and come back to the two entities with preliminary recommendations that they'll develop for a final report. So I think that also, speaking, you know, personally, I found that to be actually much more helpful, because they're basically providing a roadmap for the two entities to think about, discuss together. So we haven't, this will be the jumping off point.
But we've been meeting for over six months, the two groups.
I don't think we've really been meeting.
Well, that's what I'm asking. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, we had a meeting back in November maybe, and I think that we had the confusing meeting that didn't occur, but sort of did occur. And then we had the recent one that did occur. And this has all just been around getting an agreement for a consultant, so.
So you guys haven't met to even talk about maybe cost savings? Like you jumped right in, and I'm just asking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You jumped right into consultant.
Right. Because I think the thought was from the very beginning that a consultant is more likely to get us going quicker to an end result than if we tried to do it ourselves. That, you know, I was, that was the impression I got, was the general consensus was using a consultant to, because they'll have experience. And actually, one of the questions I asked each of the groups was, what sort of cost savings do you think, can you expect? My belief is if you've done this long enough, you should be able to give an answer quickly. You know, when I'm asked in my business to give me a, give me a quote for doing something like this, you give them a range. And this group was able to give a range, what they said would be the best case. Who knows if we'll actually achieve it or not, but at least they have the experience and the confidence to say, you should be able to get a 5% to 10% best-case cost reduction in a budget of this size between two municipalities. Maybe we'll never see 1%, but at least they had the confidence to believe they could achieve something. So that impressed me about them.
And now are there going to be more regularly scheduled meetings with them, or like?
I'm going to look at Michelle for that.
I think that what we're going to wait to do is to hear from our consultants and find out what their initial scan tells them, and ask for periodic reports from them. So I'll certainly reach out to Mark and have him, if they're the lead agency, kind of ride herd on them and see when we can receive an initial report.
And I agree that while the recent track record of some of the consultants is not great, this is the consultant that did the major portion of the work of the consolidation study for the borough and township that resulted in, you know, more than $3 million of savings to the taxpayers, as well as an enhancement to a number of the services that are provided. And as Greg said, there are three, the worst possible outcome is, you know, we find very little that we can do. But we're going to find some things. And the best case is that we would both save money, hopefully meaningful amounts of money, although I think it would be unrealistic to expect it would be of the same magnitude, because we're not combining, ultimately, there are going to be fewer opportunities to combine staff. But they're also going to tell us where it doesn't make sense to share services, where they think that either of us can deliver the services that we're currently providing independently at a lower cost or more effectively. And then the third thing is, I'll also be looking at physical things, so plant, fields, equipment, where it may be possible, if we each have a notion that we need more field space, that there may be opportunities to do this without, with less redundancy, which would provide longer-term savings for the taxpayers.
Great, thank you. I think, are we ready to move the question? Tom?
There's no motion, mate.
Oh, could I have a motion to move the question? Brian, second. Michelle? We take a vote. Can I have a show of hands for this, for this item? Support? Thank you. Motion passed with one abstention.
What's the vote?
We're voting on item.
Nine yes, one no.
You have a no?
Yes.
One no?
I am a no.
And that was item nine. So we're on item 10. I don't know what letter we're on. 10N. Shared service agreement, Princeton, Princeton Library and Princeton Public Schools Network Technical Support Specialist. It's a consent item. Is there any question on that one? Number 11, disposable of, disposal, disposal of surplus property, GovDeals 2019-20. Item 12, bid proposal for fire alarm repair time and material for the 2019-20 school year. Item 13, tuition rate for 2019-20. This is for special education, multiple disabilities. Apparently was just omitted from the last list that we did at the last meeting. Item 14, Omni Group Third Party Administrator 403B Retirement Plans. Item 15, Food Service Management Company, 2019-20-20. Item 16, School Breakfast Lunch Prices, 2019-20. Item 17, Professional Service Auditing and Accounting Services, 2019-20. Item 18, Travel Reimbursement Attendance Officer, 2019-20. Item 19, Bus Safety Drills for Spring. Item 20, Fire and Evacuation Drills. Item 21, Travel and Related Expenses, 2019-20. Item 22, Travel and Related Expenses, 2019-20.
One was 18-19.
Oh, one was 18. I was wondering, were the same. So 21 was 18-19, 22 was 19-20. And they all have attachments that we have reviewed in advance. Item O, we're on the consent vote. Approval of consent agenda items. Can I have a motion? Is that supposed to be a consent? It's an action, right? I can have a motion for the consent items. Greg, second? Michelle? Tom, do you want to call roll?
Beth Barron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Daniel Dart?
Yes.
Jessica Deutsch?
Yes.
Bill Hare?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Gregory Stankowitz?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Eleven, Evelyn Spahn?
Yes.
Item, motion passed unanimous. That takes us to P, public comment on open topics. If there's anyone who would like to come forward. There being no one, we're on closing discussion, comments of the board being none.
Can I, well, can I bring it up now?
I'm on new business.
We're on.
Oh.
Yep.
It's not new business, but we could bring, yeah, closing comments, new and old business. Yes.
When should new business be?
It's now.
It's now.
Under the Q usually would be.
Under Q, yep. Debbie?
I, so what do I say? I'd like to make a proposal?
I think you'd like to ask a question about something.
I'd like to ask a question about something?
Well, because, I mean, as a board, from what you said earlier, you have a question about a policy or practice and perhaps.
No, no, I have a cost savings idea.
I understand that.
Okay.
But we don't necessarily give ideas. We ask about an item, and then we perhaps could put it into the committee where it belongs.
Okay, all right. So I have a cost savings idea. May I read it?
Yeah, yes.
"Due to our current financial crisis, I recommend we move the teachers from the trailers in the PHS parking lot to the." in the PHS parking lot to the Numina Gallery for cost savings of 50,000 a year, which is what we're paying to rent the trailers. The gallery was created in 2000 in an abandoned storage area and has been used to house exhibits. The cost savings can be used to hire a full-time JW liaison, and we could look at having future art exhibits in the art hallways or near the pack."
So, okay, so can I have a motion to move that item to, I believe it would be the Facilities Committee, because it deals with.
Hold on, we already talked about this.
Okay.
I have not had the time to look into this.
I'm not talking about the.
No, you're talking about getting rid of the trailers.
Yeah.
That's what you had proposed. Now, the concept of moving them to Valley Road?
Mm-mm.
That's what you had, the technology staff to move to Valley Road, I looked at that. That's not going to work, but, you know, there's the possibility that we could move some people around, and what you're talking about is a possibility. The issue is, with the construction that's going on, with the renovations, we need swing space. That is potentially swing space that we're going to need while construction is going on. I haven't had a chance to talk with the high school administration about this yet. You know, we have a number of cost savings ideas that are getting thrown at me right now, along with all the other responsibilities that I have. I need time to work on this. So I know it's on the list to look at, it's not new.
The gallery area?
That was an item that I was considering, but.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah, well, the idea of getting, the whole concept of getting rid of the trailers, that's what is driving this. I need more time.
Okay.
So it sounds like this is something that's already under consideration, and again, I would say that it would be helpful for future, we could tell Tom in advance, and maybe he would be able to give you those answers, you know, before the meeting so that you would know, and that he's already looking at it.
Can I suggest that, obviously, all the board members should be welcome to suggest ideas. We have a great process for the public, I just wonder if, I don't know whether it would be the administration or one of the committees, could make clear what a good process is for the board, so that we can all provide whatever questions and ideas that we have, and they can get vetted and prioritized in whatever manner is appropriate and efficient and referred to committees as needed.
Correct.
And I would suggest perhaps that belongs in the Finance Committee, to develop that process with Tom, does that make sense? Is it a matter we should discuss in the Finance Committee? I mean, we do our work in committees, I'm just trying to figure out which one this should be located in.
Are you talking about developing the process?
Yes.
Or where to put that question?
No, I think we need to develop a process.
I thought we had talked about last time, about this hour.
Yeah.
That when these questions came up, it would be directed to the appropriate committee, and the committee would address it.
I thought we agreed that as well, but.
Which is the appropriate committee for this, though? I mean, because in some ways, what Debbie's talking about, if I may read your mind, is like looking at how we utilize space throughout the district and all our classrooms, which we've talked about, and maybe that's a whole separate thing from what you're thinking of, Tom, versus a whole separate thing of trying to save money with the trailers, so. Well, so I would say facilities. I mean, if you're asking a process question, well, I appreciate, but I would say facilities if you're looking at what we're doing with swing space, what our enrollment's going to be two, three, four years from now, because it could be that we need the Numina Gallery for instructional space, and it's $450,000 to build the trailers, so I wouldn't want to go back and do that again. But I think it, facilities could look at all the issues, because they're, sometimes simple ideas have more complex implications.
So I just think that maybe board leadership and superintendent and business administrator can think a little bit about process, because a lot of these are not going to be purely finance questions. You know, they are going to be related to facilities, they're going to be related to personnel, they may have an equity component, so I just think that the process, there's going to need to be a process to kind of get these where they need to go for, you know, the appropriate consideration.
Yeah, my understanding is that Tom is already doing that, because he's receiving these suggestions from across the district, which are similar, I would think, and he's already explained to us in the Facilities Committee that he is sending them on to the appropriate Finance Committee and other people within the administration who can actually provide answers.
So, as citizens and board members, nothing would stop us, right, from submitting an idea through the PPS Saves address that we've set up, so that it, once we do that, it would be in the system, kind of in the queue for consideration and.
Yes.
Right, and that's a good process, too, because Tom is reviewing those, and it's worth reviewing for the public as well, so those who go on our site, PPS Saves site, with any ideas that are relevant to our, consistent with our mission, Tom reviews those and then decides, is that an idea that can be handled through dissemination to an administrator or to a board committee? Tom, you mentioned this in Finance yesterday, you received 60-something suggestions through the PPS Saves site?
Yeah, the last time I checked, that's what was on there, yeah.
And that, I think we were going to talk about trying to get that site, the link out there to the public, so that public staff all know to go to it and send in their ideas?
Indeed.
I hope you're mentioning it tonight as part of doing.
PPS Saves on the website.
Maybe that's why I did that, I wonder.
On the website. There's a Google form, you can fill it out, you can make suggestions, they will be considered. So, if there's nothing further.
I have a comment just about this, this particular issue of liaison.
You know what, if you're going to speak, I guess, we're a bit out of order, we passed public comment, but you can come up, why don't you come up, Felicia, and speak and say your name and address, and we'll go back to that.
Hi, Felicia Spitz, I'm with Princeton Children's Fund, the address is 5 Haslett Avenue in Princeton, New Jersey. The liaison at JW is a position that's posted now, so if this gets thrown to some other committee, we won't have an answer to this very important issue until it gets out of some committee. So I think if we can find money to pay for a full-time person, that has to get elevated to a more immediate response than maybe some of the 60 other things that are coming in, because the position isn't going to be open. And the quality of person that we get is going to be determined by whether it's a full-time position and who's paying for it, so I think this is very important, and it's an issue of equity.
Do you want to speak to the.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to, because, and actually, there was a reference that Debbie made in her Personnel Committee report, that for this year, we're doing this position as a shared service position with the Y, and we're looking at having someone who knows our families, knows our students, has been working closely with our schools already.
She's great, yeah.
And we're looking at three days a week of that individual, and then gearing up for the possibility of making it full-time for the following year is the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Brian? Michelle, second?
Okay.[1394.33]